So you could start the live stream line and start that one.
Let me know when we're ready to go then.
How many did you bring?
Technology wise?
I gave one in the mailman area.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Sally, are we recording?
We're still recording.
We are, alright.
You want us to do that?
Let's call the meeting order guys and we'll say the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we got everybody here, so we got the quorum. On the regular agenda, we are going to be tabling, let's see, nine A two, nine B two, and nine C two. If I got that right now, guys? Gone over that a couple of times. We'll do the public hearing on nine. We'll do the public hearing and we're not going to take any action or discussion tonight on that. Beyond that, that's all I know that we're going to change here.
Motion to approve the agenda with changes.
Okay.
Second.
So motion, Jeff does a second. Alright, all in favor say aye.
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 Alright, motion carries. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Any last minute changes, any of that stuff, Jim, Brenton, that you guys all have? Anybody have any questions on this?
No.
Okay, now look for a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Alright, Sarah makes a motion. Naomi does a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. We'll move on to minutes from the last meeting. Anybody see any corrections that need to be made or?
We didn't see any corrections. Motion to approve the meeting minutes from July sixth.
Okay, Sarah makes a motion, can I get a second? Alright, anybody does a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, time for public comment. Anybody got anything you want to talk about tonight? Going once, going twice. Alright, move on. Ross, what do you got for us this month? All good news, right? Happy thoughts?
Always.
Excellent.
Always good news in the sheriff's offices here.
Perfect, I like that.
I apologize for missing the last meeting, like normal. Uh, my procrastination caught up with me in the form of a technical error. I wasn't able to make the report out, so that was, I think, a sign I should have done it earlier. Uh, let's go through the numbers really quick. Hundred forty-five calls for service. Um, citations and warnings were a little below average, seventeen citations, thirty-nine warnings. Um, I'd say about a third of those had to do with Wall Avenue, uh, on the new speed limit area. If I had to guess, I didn't get the exact number, I just kind of took a glance at it on the way here.
How is that going?
It seems to be going well. Um, like I always preface, I'm in a squad car, that's very hard to hide, but, um, even out of, I mean, granted, I'm sure contractors are speeding when I'm not around, but the contractors I've seen and the folks traveling through who aren't from the area are doing very well. Um, a lot of fifteen to twenty mile an hour. Um, I had one young gentleman, eighteen year old, doing thirty-nine over the bridge. Um, I wasn't able to verify his speed right off the bat, so I didn't pull him over. I kind of followed him home and his father confirmed it was probably him doing that, so. Nice little talking to, so a little informal stuff there, but.
Good.
Um, much better than I thought it would, honestly.
Good, thank you.
Um, I put a little ditty in the paragraph about our event we're holding on August tenth in the parking lot of the Horace Luthen Church, our night to night celebration. Um, that will be the day after the next meeting, I believe, so I'll bother you again about it. Um, my first year planning it, because we didn't get to do it last year because of COVID, and I am very terrified no one's going to show up, so please, everybody come and tell everyone you know. Um, hired a DJ who's got, uh, ties to the town here, I think they're actually members in the church. Um, her father lives on Sunnyside, so, um, there'll be lots of equipment there. We'll have our airboats there, the SWAT team. Got confirmation today that FM ambulance and the Sanford Air Med Chopper will be there. Um, calls pending, of course, if they have somewhere to go.
Weather permitting too.
Yeah, I mean, they have more important things to do, I understand that, but, um, food, music, entertainment, lots of giveaways. You guys, the bikes even, you guys donated, so.
Okay, cool.
It's very good.
We'll, uh, make sure we get that on Facebook and, uh.
Yeah, I've been waiting for, I had, I had talked to you about it. We're, I'm waiting for my, my office to make an event here, and I think you guys are going to share it.
Yep.
Do a reminder and stuff, so.
Yep, and we'll just kind of keep pushing that out there so people are aware of it, just more to get the awareness going on it.
We greatly appreciate it. I've never planned anything that big before, it's not big for some people, but I just, I just want people to come, because I'll feel silly if I spent all this money and all these, all these wonderful donations and here's ten people, so.
Let's hope we have, we have a nice sunny day where it's not a hundred degrees and all that.
Right, I'll take a hundred degrees instead of rain, I can still be outside a hundred degrees, so.
Yeah, it's a little stressful, isn't it?
It is, yeah, no, I, I thought about the, the stuff you plan and contingencies, I don't really have a contingency, so.
It'll be good.
Hope and pray.
So have you heard any, I mean, has there been much comments that you've heard about Wall Avenue and the speed reduction?
Not a ton, I've heard some complaints from like, construction companies being, oh, it's too slow, or, oh, it's annoying, and some joking, some not, but, um, I mean, I drive through there fifty times a day, I have zero problem going fifteen miles an hour, so.
Yeah, like tonight now, the road's messy again because it rained on it, so if you're not going to want to drive too fast on it anyways.
Yeah, I know, I, I was jumping around pretty good while it was raining even, I started to get pretty pocky, but.
Yeah, but like I told people, if you're raising dust, you're probably going over twenty, so.
Right, and I, I haven't heard many complaints the other way, of folks saying people are speeding too much. I mean, I'm sure it happens, like I said, I'm not there all the time, but.
There's some people that are quick, a little hurry in the morning, a little hurry to get home at night, but I mean, for the most part, I think it's been fairly good.
Yeah, like I said, surprisingly good.
It'll take a little practice for folks to get it figured out, and, uh, I think we'll get there. But I just, thanks for keeping an eye on it.
And we'll continue to do so, I'm here till December, you'll have, that, that will have my attention till December, so.
Fair enough.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, anybody got any questions?
Yeah, what's the animal, like, what's the animal calls, just like loose animals or?
So it's, yeah, it's usually, um, loose dogs, barking dogs. Um, so this covers, um, rural Horace addressing as well, so a lot of, um, car versus deer type stuff, or, um, like deer on the side of the road that's injured kind of thing. I think we had one or two of those as well. Um, the animal calls are a bit up, but it's usually barking dogs or dogs roaming or cats, neighbor's cat in my yard kind of thing. Never anything too severe. We had one that was, uh, guy's dog got out of his garage, was barking pretty aggressively at some people, but the dog was inside by the time I got there and was taken care of, so. No animal sites, I think there's one animal warning for the county ordinance, but no sites.
And this is only the month of June?
Yep, just June.
Okay. I was going to ask about fireworks.
Yeah, no, that'll be the next one. There wasn't, there wasn't a ton, I worked the day of the fourth. Uh, I didn't work, I worked the night, I didn't work the night, I'm sure there was a couple calls that I imagine for late fireworks. I haven't taken a peek at that yet, but no one told me anything too extreme, so I think the city did pretty well.
Somebody shot off a bunch from last night.
Yeah, I was, I've been told about that too, we're gonna, I'm going to pay that gentleman a visit tomorrow, and we're gonna hopefully have a conversation, so.
Yep.
I, I, I love patriotism, patriotism much to the next guy, but a little late.
Yeah, a little late.
I wanted to say thank you too for letting my son see your, your cop car the other day, that was really cool for him, so. I think it's really cool to, that you're so active with the community and, um, allowing that kind of stuff to happen, he was pretty excited, so.
Yeah, it's my favorite part of the job and most of ours is, I mean, I stop and like, I beg kids to crawl around my squad car, like, please come enjoy it, have yourself fun. It's my favorite thing, so he seemed to have a good time, so it's pretty fun.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody got anything else? Alright, thank you, sir.
Thanks, folks.
Alright, Mike.
So, Mike is not here tonight, so.
See that?
He was supposed to be stopping by, but about to follow up with him, we'll have to table that until.
Yep, okay, cause Lucas has gone too, alright. Then we'll move on to number nine, so. Barrett, if you want to just do a quick, I don't know, I mean, quick explanation of where we're at here, because we'll get into it a little deeper next time around.
Sure, yeah, we have a, uh, application for a replat for the southmost quarter of Maple Lake Estates. Uh, this was reviewed by the planning commission. I had further discussions with the applicant and we didn't feel that it was ready to go forward, so we asked them to be tabled for two weeks.
Okay, so we're going to do the public hearing, be, just because it was posted in the paper, um, and we want to be compliant with what we're posting in the paper, so we'll go along with that. So I'll open up for a public hearing for the plat. Anybody's got any comments they want to make about that? Going once, going twice. Alright, I'll close the public hearing on the plat. On the rezone, I will open up that public hearing.
Anybody's supposed to close?
Or do you want me to keep them? I suppose I should keep it open, huh?
Keep it open.
Fine, we'll keep it open. Then I'll open up the public hearing.
Open at six-ten, and then just keep it open.
Yep, and I'll open up the next one, and for the rezone, the public hearing, anybody's got any comments on that?
So you put it out for two weeks, so you're going to do another public hearing, are you going to have that or a public hearing on that?
I'm guessing we'll probably.
So by not closing the public hearing, what that allows is there could be comments at the next meeting. So it'd be that item, folks could talk tonight, or they could talk at the next meeting when it's presented in full also. So if you were to close the public hearing, then there'd be no comments allowed, so that's why we want to keep it open.
Being we got the other part.
Does the developer coming in the next one?
Uh, yeah, I anticipate it'll be.
Yeah, it should be.
Okay, so like I said, we'll real, we'll open the rezone hearing, public hearing. If anybody got any comments about that, otherwise, as I said, we'll have a continuance until the next meeting. And also open up for the public hear, hearing on the future land use map and comprehensive plan amendment. Anybody's got anything you want to comment on that tonight?
Yeah, since we're not diving into the details, we will do that next time so that we can get a more overdrawn this, these, so.
Yeah, it would still be open, so you can get public comments during the public hearing still.
Alright, so we'll do a continuance on that, then we'll pick all the rest of this up at the next meeting. And we'll move along. Number ten, Jim, you got this one.
Lucas had it.
Well, I know, but he's void of being here this evening, so he'll have to wing it on us.
I do not have the resolution acknowledging the petition for improvements received, so.
Did Lucas have it?
He's must have.
He has it, okay.
He must be, he has it, so.
So we'll have to table it.
He didn't send it either, I don't believe.
I didn't see it in his attachments.
Did we know he was going to be there?
I, I have a PDF here, is that, is there more to it than what I reviewed?
I don't think so.
Let me see.
Item number ten.
Yeah.
There is a.
If you have a PDF, I could probably talk about it here real quick. He did send. So my understanding is, and I could verify it from him, but my understanding is that the developer has requested the improvements for Arrowhead Third Edition. Now, we've been working with that developer, the plat has been approved, so, um, they're now requesting to be able to have the improvements, have a special assessment district set for those improvements to be installed. Uh, that's the very, very initial step, is acknowledging that, yes, the developer has requested those improvements to be done. Then whether you come back and go and set the district, those other steps at a future meeting, so.
So this is just acknowledging.
It's just acknowledgement that the improvements have been requested.
Boilerplate.
So you could, you could take action on that.
And it's just for that area where he is, um, declared for Arrowhead Third?
It'd be the Arrowhead Third subdivision, um, that'd be off North Side of Liberty and West Side of Congress Seventeen. There's a little, I believe there's a little alfalfa here.
Yep, Hayfield there.
Hayfield there, yep.
Okay, any questions? Otherwise, I'll look for a motion to accept. Again, this is pre-boiler plate, to get things started.
I'll make the motion to accept the resolution acknowledging petition for was received.
Okay, Chelsea made a motion, can I get a second?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and second that.
Okay, Sarah does a second. Alright, so all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Alright, we'll get that started. Brenton, you got the next one?
Okay, the next one here is to talk about this building here, City Hall. Uh, we're talking about remodel for the building. I've been working with Chelsea and Naomi, uh, since it's applicable into their portfolio, portfolios. Uh, Keith, our building, one of our building inspectors, has been working with us to, to look at some different layouts, concepts for City Hall. Uh, Chelsea is working with us and through Prairie Design to help out, get the layouts and get all the information together for a building permit. Um, what this would be is to reconfigure this building insides, uh, to make it more efficient. We would use this space here as office space also, and it would result in us having to have our council meetings, planning commission meetings, any city meetings that we have a audience from the public or could have one, it would likely be at the fire hall. That would be where we'd be working with them to have meetings there. It would likely be for a couple of years until we could have a new city hall taken care, or addressed, but it gives us time. This would be that Band-Aid in between, and so we're, we don't have any, feel any rush, we don't have the space for the needs of communities staffing wise if we don't do this, or this type of deal. Um, what we're working on also is we'll be finalizing the layout of it. Chelsea and Naomi and I will work to do that, and we'll go and get bids for it, and then come back to council with the overall layout and the bid, so you have an idea, so you'll have a good idea of the cost and everything for this. Uh, we do anticipate the cost is going to be up there. I don't have the exact figure, because we're still working configurations, and you know, if we would be moving like a bathroom, like this corner went over, um, different elements like that too, so.
Are they going to be able to still do their job while construction's going on?
That's what we're going to have to work out with the contractor too. They may have to work on half the building and then move staff around a little bit while we're in transition of it, so. Uh, it is going to be a significant sized project to do entirely. Um, like I said, I hate to put a dollar amount, because I'm not an expert with construction of remodels, so we wouldn't be able to give you the exact dollar amount until we have a bid, Chelsea, when she has the drawings configured, we could probably get a ballpark, but not the exact, so.
What is, uh, the ultimate plan for this building once a new city hall, um, is in place? Is this something that will then be, um, pretty much sold? Is it something that will be used as maybe public works? What, what's the ultimate goal?
As of right now, our plan would be for public works to still be in here, so public works, they would be staffed in here, have a free up room in our shop, and that would be the Band-Aid there until the time comes for a facility for them, which we anticipated will eventually happen, but it's not as pressing as the city hall. So we'd use a space even after remodel for public works to use.
So this buys us a little time and gives us, uh, an opportunity to really plan something out that's going to be feasible and functional for the city? Good, okay.
And the use of city, or the use of the fire hall, is that something we have to pay rent for?
We would, we would likely have a rental agreement with them. Uh, I have had some discussions with fair chief, him and I ran it later this week, and discuss it some more, to talk about that and to see, you know, different, what they'd be looking for from us. Uh, what I have requested is if we did do this, um, arrangement with them, that we would have set days. So every Monday, Tuesday, for example, we would have the fire hall booked. The reason behind that is because then we know, if we need to do a public meeting, we know we have those two dates available. Um, if we don't have a meeting in there, then other government teams like, I don't know, township or, um.
Pull you in the park board?
Park Board, planning commission, all the different groups associated, we say we could use it those nights. That's what the intention would be for it, so.
Well, the park board has their, um, one warming house, I think, that, if I remember right, they were thinking of maybe having meetings in there?
I don't know if they can based on how they permit it and how they designed it, because they didn't do one of the exit doors in there, but I'm, I'm top of my head. Yep.
Um, but just thinking about, uh, other backup options.
Yep, yep. Uh, but that, that's a, the concept we're working through right now, in order to be able to have our meetings, and we've been talking about how do we, you know, can we move the cameras over there for the audio visual? Cause they have interest in having some audio visual cameras there, so. We are not, we're not asking for any action from council on it tonight, but just wanted to give you guys a heads up. Run through really quickly of what is going on with that, so you know where we're at, so.
Okay, alright, cool, let's move on to twelve then.
Okay. Okay, the next one here, pull it up. I've been working with Jim and our public works staff for quite a while and Council Mayor Trudeau on identifying our projects for capital improvement program. Now, the city is, hasn't really had a formal capital improvement program yet, and even now we're, we have our list of projects for twenty twenty-one, typically this would cover about four year span. But we need to be able to have some projects move forward, so that way we could get them in this year. Um, in addition, I'll come back to council with the later years, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. That way you're trying to process just a couple years at a time, like I do with the budget. I break the budget out over a period of time, not all at once. I apologize, it's pretty small, we could zoom it in there. Um, Sally, could you zoom in on those? So.
You realize I need two years, not right?
Yeah. We're going to get some magnifying glasses with the horse logo on there for you, so I know they're small, we'll have to zoom them in for, on the PDF here. I broke these out into four categories, projects that we'd be looking for action to move forward, so we could start getting the bidding, get a bidding process going and finally, get those to where we come back to council with the bids and move forward with those projects. The next one is a group of projects that council has already approved, funding has already been dedicated for them, and we're moving forward, there's one project in that category that has been paused because we've met with residents in the neighborhood, Council Mayor Trudeau has met with them, uh, Jim has met with them also, and we're reassessing that project. That would be the Old River Oxbow between Southwood and Liberty, Southwood Drive and Liberty Lane. The next set of projects would be ones that we know are needed, however, we also recognize that we need to have meetings with the neighborhoods to talk about these projects. Some of these projects are fairly significant in size, two of them, one is talking about drainage and street improvements in the Chestnut Ironwood area. That is a significant sized project. Uh, the city would not be able to tackle that probably on its own, so we'd have to talk with residents about cost share and what the project would include. Uh, the other project that comes to mind for that type of dialogue also is the, and actually I thought I had it here, is Alamon's Edition, so I do not see it on here, I apologize, I'll add it on, is Alamon's Edition, we need to talk with that neighborhood about drainage. Drainage has been an ongoing discussion, I've been here for just over three years, and that conversation was going on long before that. So I think ever since the neighborhood had its first house in, drainage has been an issue there, so. Uh, we need to have a conversation with that neighborhood, talk about what the project could, could or should entail, and the feasibility of cost share with that, so. And then the last group is for new development additions. Um, these new developments that you see before you on it are ones that are either started or will be starting in the near future. Uh, I have South Hill Third Edition, South Hill Farms Third Edition, that's Northland High School, New Mill School there, after that cemetery. Um, that phase is under construction right now. Deer Creek Estates, that development has been, by your saying, approved, but the assessment district has not been set yet for that one.
Just got moved this last weekend.
Yep, so they're, I think they're getting ready. Uh, Arrowhead Third, we just spoke about that one. Lakeview First Edition, uh, that one isn't too far away from getting the bonding locked in. A contractor has been selected for that one, I believe, yes. All these different developments, and then Terragarn's Third Edition, uh, contractor is selected for that one, I believe the contractor is just starting, I haven't seen them on site, are they on site now? There's enough construction activity there, it's hard to tell, so. So that's why they're broken up in those three categories. I'll run through, I'll try to be quick on the projects, going back up to the top. The projects that we've asked for council that we can move forward with and get bids for would be, uh, the final lift overlay, so it'd be a little bit of a mill, patching, and then overlay, uh, in Lost River First through Fourth Edition. So that'd be Lost River Road, Firefly, Goldfinch, and Wildrose. Uh, we like to do that last overlay or lift into a new development a few years afterwards, after the houses have come in. Uh, Lost River First through Fourth Edition has been built out fairly well. Uh, there's only a handful of lots left for construction in there. Uh, our anticipation would be to do this project towards end of summer, early fall. Typically when we like to do those type of projects. Uh, one that complements that, it wouldn't be for necessarily that area, but it'd be a chip seal and street patching. Uh, we have a few street patches here or there, but mainly chip seals were what would be occurring in that area. Uh, we would identify those project stints, do you remember the locations, Jim, for that chip ceiling? I know we discussed them.
Prairie View.
Prairie View and Rudes, right? Yeah, Prairie View and Rudes. The next one is sanitary sewer manhole rehabilitation at various locations. We identified some of the worst manholes likely in that Chestnut Ironwood and Rudes Edition, those two areas, uh, would be most likely where these manholes would be. We have quite a problem of infiltration, so groundwater seeping into these manholes goes into our sanitary sewer system, which results in more sewer, more water into the sewer system, either going to Fargo or to our lagoons. So it'll cut down on our costs there. Um, that would be where the projects are most likely to happen. The funding for that would come out of the sewer fund. Horseshoe Bend Lift Station and Sewer Line, that'd be by the Horseshoe Bend Trailer Park, the Trailer Park in the north end of town here. Uh, they need a lift station to decommission the lagoon and connect to sewer, so they have petitioned for that improvement. Uh, we're working up the final details on that to be able to bring that forward to council and have the assessment district set for that one. That one would also service Deer Creek Estates and some neighboring areas for development activity in, along that sixty-fourth Cairo and Seventeen intersection or area. One of the big ones here, connection to Castro Water, that would be the main connection to them. The project that we have already funded, or we have funded now and anticipate to have starting soon would be the waterline project. That's down there in projects already funded. Uh, this one, we are going to State Water Commission next month, and we'll find out early next month if we are selected for funding for that. It did go through a subcommittee meeting of the State Water Commission with no comments from them, which is typically a good sign. We are also awarded engineering dollars for that project, so it looks fairly optimistic of funding for it. I haven't seen a situation where you don't get funded for it if they partially fund you, so that's good news. Waterline cleaning, this would be to do what they call pigging lines, basically go through the line and push like a sponge type deal through to clean out the water lines. This would be done in areas that the waterline replacement project is not addressing. So where the service lines are, or the, not service lines, the main water lines are still newer, in decent shape, this is where that would occur.
How often is that done, or when was the last time it was done?
It's never been done.
Never been done.
Is that done by our own city works, or is that a company hired into that?
So you are members of the rural water, and the rural water will come in and perform its little services with no charge or a very reduced rate.
Reduced rate.
Or you being a member of their services, so that's our anticipation right now, is utilize the, um, Rural Water Association to get that done.
We may have to contract for some costs though, because we're at a borderline state of, we're almost too big for rural water and being able to be covered by them, and so there's a fine line of what they'll do for us and what they won't.
Public Works has picked some force means in the past, so. It just depends on the size of the project and the availability to get it, get it done in a timely manner.
Yep.
I mean, it seems like something that would need to be done to keep things in working order.
Uh, if the system's operating properly, it's not a real big issue, but just with the potential turnover to. If the system's operating properly, it's not a real big issue, but just with the potential turnover to Castrol, it's a good peace of mind to get, make sure that those have all been removed of any type of buildup on the inside of pipes.
We do, you do, a practice done for sewers, sewer line cleaning is very similar. That is not a bad practice to have done on, or every so many years. That is in case you have any buildup, push all that sewage down, so that would be line cleaning. That is another practice that we'd be looking at doing down the road. Excuse me, I do not have it factored into 2021, but you'll probably see that in future years, day 22, 23, and 24. Almond's Payment Repairs, now this project could be impacted based on whatever we do with drainage up in Almond's Edition, but this is to saw and cut joints into the concrete and then seal it. Something the contractor, you would think would have done, but it was not done in that development years ago. We want to get that done before any further damage to the road could occur. So I think the road is in fairly decent shape still, but we want to make sure that, that concrete road lasts quite some time. Typically, concrete does last a long time, we want to make sure that does.
Did we get those wells put in?
We did test wells, they all were dry.
We struck out.
All three of them were dry.
That would happen, the driest spring that we've ever had.
Yep.
Was, was that?
There was no evidence of material that would even produce water, to be honest. All clay, every, all three spots, Almond's, Dreamfield, and then Chestnut. So we just didn't hit the right spot. We tried to go on area where there was city property, so we were limited as to where we could drill. And all three areas where there's city property was, was dry. So the driller said, give us another spot and we'll come back and, and look at it, but that's where we're at right now, so.
Do you guys have an idea where you probably would be more likely to hit water?
We have some ideas, I've been asking some people who live out there, I've been asking contractors who've done some work of that area, just to kind of get a feel. We are looking at, trying to find some more maps that have a little bit more soil characteristics on it, so. Everything I told in our chestnut, we're just too far west, we needed to go east a little bit and then we're gonna get it. But just don't have any land over that way, so.
So we'd have to get it to access.
Like an easement?
We had to get an easement or something to do it.
Punch a hole in there.
Let us know who you need access from, I'll have those discussions.
Yep.
Get this done.
Yep. Okay, the other areas here, sanitary sewer, Lost River, sanitary pump upgrade. As a development has occurred in Lost River, that lift station needs, the pumps, the pumps need to be upgraded, upsized. That is what that project is. This one is an important one, we've talked about this many times over the years. I know it's been an ongoing project, long before I even started our concept, is a master stormwater plan. That would, what that would do is also help identify what types of projects and what are projects would be in the future for stormwater. And it would be more of a comprehensive plan identifying how these projects can complement each other. So do they have a change of action or not? So. We have that one, we've worked with Interstate to get a general scope or a cost estimate for it. That's where you see that 60,000. But it would be very helpful to start tackling stormwater projects with, with that plan. Last one here would be compost site improvements, expansion of concrete work out there, like where you see the compost bins. It'd be expansion of that pad or that area. Or if we need to do purchasing equipment for that. So mo- most likely you would be seeing either expanding concrete or increased security of the site. We do have individuals that do dump illegally out there. It goes in spurts.
What are they dumping?
Non-compost materials or you see like mattress pads or, or like a mattress or couch or whatever.
To a site, I had two people in the last week drive right on the 66th next to my house. One person dropped off a barbecue grill out in that field and another person dropped off a bed frame.
Yep.
And I went out there and held the damn thing in myself while I was sick.
Yep.
Because I was mad as hell and I tipped on license plate numbers and everything else. We need to make sure that people understand that they need to get rid of things appropriately, not just dump wherever it's convenient.
And we have the same challenge at times here, even take old appliances, but we'll have people drop off stuff that you shouldn't ever drop off there or they'll throw it in, you know, sometimes they'll put it in front of our dumpster, but you'll see, like I said, couches, furniture of all kinds of sorts, bookshelves, you name it. Anything bulky that somebody just wants to get rid of, but they don't know where else to put it or don't want to take it to dump. They'll just throw it on to us or throw it in our ditches, so.
Which is why cleanup week is important too.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Anyways, that is a list of the projects that we have. As you can see, I broke them out based on what funding source, we anticipate they would, where they'd be funded from. So you'd see that in the future too for all the other projects. I left the ones that need neighborhood discussions down here, or those were left blank. And like I said, because that needs to have neighborhood discussions while cost shares, so all we have in there is a project cost. The estimates for the new developments, those are latest estimates from working with Interstate. Some of them might be slightly higher than what a bid amount may have been. And that's just to protect ourselves budgetary wise here within the CIP. So what we're looking for, or for though on this would be approval of this list to where we could at least go off and get bids and prices for these different ones. You're not approving us to do the construction of them at this time, you're approving us to get the numbers and move forward with those projects so we can come back to you and get the approval to move forward with them, once we have the actual dollars.
And is that like, that's not like everything at once, obviously it's just you're giving, you have the approval to kind of tackle this list?
I have the, you know, it's basically moving forward with this list, get the bids, get the numbers, come back with you, or come back to you. You may see, council meeting, two projects, you might see five of them, just depends when we could get all the bids collected.
We can look at it on an individual basis, this is just.
Most likely, a lot of these projects, especially the smaller ones. Obviously, connection Castrol, the Horseshoe Bend Lift Station, those are going to go through a formal bidding process. Smaller ones would likely be a less formal, where we get a bid, but it isn't sealed bid. Depends on the dollar amount for the projects. Manhole repair, you're probably going to see one or two quotes, or depending on how many companies can do it. And here you go, can we move forward with that one? Because that one's a lot smaller budget, so. We also like to try to group some of these projects together when possible. So if we have asphalt work, we like to group projects of like together, so.
Well, makes sense and it provides cost savings, so.
Yep.
That's good. I'll make a motion to approve the capital improvement program preliminary list.
Yeah, and this is just for 2021.
Correct.
Yeah.
All right, Sarah made a motion, can I get a second?
A second.
Jeff does a second. Right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, Brenton, you got the next one here.
Takes me a minute to write everything down.
Okay. Next item here is in regards to building inspections and public works staffing. We have one position, it's a part-time seasonal position for stormwater inspector. That position, we have not had any luck of getting applicants for it. Therefore, we do have a need for additional help in public works within the 2022 budget. I'd be requesting that we add another public works employee. What this would do is with, this would be to stop pursuing the part-time seasonal stormwater. Create as a full-time public works position, which stormwater would be their primary area of focus. So each of our public works staff that is a non-supervisor has an area where they spend a little more time with or specialize in. One of them works heavier with water issues, the other one works heavier with sewer. And another one, which is one of our, one of our part, our only part-time guy, his main focus is mowing. So they divide and conquer, they'll still work together, help each other out wherever work is needed. But they spend a little more time in those different respective areas. This position would focus heaviest on stormwater, stormwater compliance, site compliance for construction sites, different things like that for new home construction. When they're caught up on that compliance side, they can help public works with their various projects going on, public works help with locates, help with mowing, street patching, anything else that comes up public works wise that they need to tackle. In the winter, this helps tremendously too, because we have a lot more, we have many more lane miles added to our city over the last couple of years with the new developments. It gives us more support to be able to help keep up with snow removal, maintenance, and that too. So that is the logic there with that position. Like I said, we'd scrap the part-time seasonal position, no longer do that, and create a full-time public works position. It's a lot easier to find a individual to apply and to find good candidates for a full-time position than it is a part-time position. As for our building inspections, this would be to create a, almost like a coordinator slash administrative person that would be responsible for basically processing permit, processing permits, improving and working with our permitting software, SmartGov. And also scheduling inspections for our building inspectors. We'd like to have the building inspectors focus more on the planner view. We have for residential side, our backlog is fairly consistent at about four weeks, four, four weeks, sometimes it gets to five, sometimes it gets a little under four. Depends on the wave of permits coming at us.
What's a norm, like hypothetically, like what should it be at for your?
Most of our neighbors are less than a week turnaround. Now ideally, if we could be a, a week, week and a half, that would be the most ideal in my eyes. I think that's fairly reasonable for like a new home, but a lot of our peers are turning them around in about a week or less.
They have more staff.
They have a lot more staff, but the number of permits flying at us is a lot higher than what we ever had and we're pretty comparable to our neighbors.
Where are we at right now, permit wise? I know you got this.
I loved showing this one at, during my update, so I could tell you tonight, or right now. Year-to-date total permits, we are, as of 4th thirtieth afternoon, 368 permits have been applied for, 258 have been issued. To give you a comparison.
We're at 258 already this year?
258 permits total, so that's new homes, remodels, decks, fences, everything. 258 permits have been issued. And we have had 368 applied for. That's the backlog right now is 110 permits.
That's down there double of our neighbors.
Last year, well, that's total for overall permits.
Yeah.
New homes, we are at 227 new home applications.
We broke 200, I was wondering.
Yep, 227 new home applications and we have 178 permits have been issued for new homes. So that's of the issued, that 258 issued for total permits, 178 of those are new homes. To give you a comparison, last year at the end of July, so we're only halfway through July, a little over halfway through. End of July last year, we had 52 new homes issued. And for the whole year, last year was 86 new homes. Last year, total permits, for the whole year, we issued 205 permits for the whole year. At the end of July last year, we issued 102 permits.
We're experiencing.
And that's why we're behind.
Yeah.
Yes.
We're experiencing unprecedented growth. And so I wanted to put an order of magnitude behind the commentary when you say it's taking three to four weeks. And people say, well, Fargo and West Fargo can turn it around in a week or a week and a half. I want people to understand why it's taking so long. Now, that's not an excuse for people not to get things done, and that's not the case here, I know that, because I've been in here when these guys are pulling their hair out. But I want that order of magnitude to be publicized, I want people to understand why you're asking for help.
Yep.
Because we need to justify when you ask for help, because we added a building inspector position not that long ago.
Yes.
And so we have a building inspector, we added a second one, and now we're looking at an administrative assistant. Someone to more or less just handle the, the influx of paperwork and assist public works and things like that, right?
This one would be intended to help out building inspections. If they have downtime from helping out building inspections, they'd be able to help out planners only, that's my intentions there. For this one, like I said.
So they're not like a coordinator?
Well, they'd be, what their main duties would be is processing permits. All the paperwork associated with them, so we could have our inspectors doing planner views and inspections, more specialty for their position. And have a less specialized position handling the paperwork, scheduling the permit, or the scheduling inspections. So when a contractor calls, they coordinate with that person who already knows their schedules. Right now, we have contractors, a lot of times they will call, even their building inspectors, their cell phones and try to get inspections scheduled, sometimes even 15 minutes out. And that makes it to where their days are so interrupted that they cannot get planner reviews completed as timely as possible. So what we've been pushing for is if somebody calls in the morning, they're in afternoon. If they call in the afternoon, it's the next morning. Roughly a four hour window, windows to where they can get their inspections, because otherwise it's very difficult for them to coordinate their days with planner view, inspection, everything.
Trying to group, so then do they try to group the inspections to one trip, like minimal trips?
When they can, when they can, you have some builders, they'll come in, they'll call for a handful of approaches. They might be building three houses or six houses and they'll call for the, like a driveway approach. Say, hey, we're going to pour this one, this one, this one. You'll see a lot of contractors like to do that because they can just have the concrete trucks just keep coming and get done for the day. So when they can coordinate, yes, they can.
They have to be there for that?
What they do is they have to, like a driveway approach, for example, they have to inspect to make sure that they follow the right forming of it. Reinforcement, like rebar or different things like that within it.
To ensure rigor and depth inspection.
Yeah, when they pour footings or footings, they have to inspect that to see where they support properly, where they sized out. Is, is the rebar spaced appropriately, same thing with foundation walls, they have to do that too. So they'll go out there, they'll measure to see, okay, yep, was this done properly?
Would this person like filter emails or, so I, I know that's a struggle too for, for the planner viewers to have to.
Probably not as much on the email for them, it'd be more focused on processing permits, processing the payments, coordinating with a contractor or builder, so if we're missing information, the planner here, building inspector, they could say, hey, I need this information. And they could reach out to that builder and say, we need this to be able to continue your review.
By default, they would probably be kind of the goal too.
Yeah, they're there to help them out in areas.
So could that be like the first line of contact for these construction folks then, so that they know who to go to directly?
Yep, so when they call, say, Hall, if that person is available, they would be talking with that person. And it'd be the buffer in between the building inspectors and, so.
I think this will be extremely helpful, well needed or much needed and a great way to get things more organized for sure.
Yeah, it's just to get something, help, help those guys in the office, and then like I said, coordinate the calls so that somebody, there's a point that the calls can go to and they're not interrupted.
If this person is going to have an emphasis on stormwater, I'd like to see a SWIP, a SWIP class or a SWIP certification added to this resume. That it's cheap, it's easy, I've done it, if I can do it, anybody can do it. It's extremely valuable information and it's something that I think we as a community need to be more aware of. We've got an awful lot of overflow when it comes to stormwater pollution and we can do better prevention. I'd like to see a little more emphasis on that for this position.
I have a, I have a question and maybe it's going to be silly, but. I have a, I have a question and maybe it's gonna be silly, but, um. Looking at the future and we don't know what the future holds and is anybody concerned about? I mean, I know we're growing super fast right now and we are kind of struggling, but in the future, when things slow down. Is there gonna be enough work for these positions to keep them on staff? And then we wouldn't have to let people go. I just, I wanna make sure that, yes, we're struggling right now and I think we can all say that we are. But I wanna make sure that, you know, in the long term.
That, that is part of why we have been hesitant to add positions or not as quick to add them. Cause we wanna make for darn sure, everything we can tell, yes, there'd be work for them. Uh, even with our billion inspectors, our last two that we have hired, Caleb and Jesse, when we brought them on, it was. Hey, how do you feel about driving a haul truck in case work did die down? Okay, we have a really bad snowstorm. Those guys are out there. Let's say we have a snowstorm that happens for a day or two. Then they're able to get out there and help out. Now, those guys aren't going to probably be behind a truck that requires a CBL. But they'd be able to help out our public works group, uh, when we have a really bad snowstorm or things like that, so. Can, can I guarantee you that there'd be all these positions in the future? I can't, because it does go up and down based on the. Uh, environment, how many built, how much construction is happening, based on the conditions that we have right now though. And the fact that West Fargo is almost out of land to build out on until the diversion is done. Fargo has very limited land also. Horse is the main area of focus to the building industry and that's probably going to continue that way for probably five or six years. Or more, depends on how long it takes the diversion to be built. So we're going to probably have this pressure from the industry for the next six years or better, so.
And I will say too, cause Brent and I discussed this, uh, multiple times, like, I think he got created with this position. And the duties and the, the, um, the level of the position, I think it was well filed.
Kind of play both ways there, help when necessary.
And we have to be very careful because we don't have the space.
Yeah.
We have to be very careful.
Part of what we have to.
Okay, and so like these positions, they don't sign like a contract for like, hey, you're gonna be here for X amount of years, so?
No. No, we do not have to do that.
I'd like to make a motion to approve these two positions.
Chelsea makes a motion, take it a second? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, so yeah, let's get those started so we can, those positions filled.
Well. We do have Mike here.
I see that.
Uh, Mike Manstrom from Colliers, sorry, Mike, to call you out that quick.
We, we had you pegged a little earlier, but we can sure bring you up now.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, if you wanna, are you ready or are you gonna touch base, so? If you're all right, Corey, then we'd have Mike go over the.
Yep, that's I figured, we'll have him, we'll have him go. We'll do number eight then, so Mike, if you wanna just give us the update on all of this, we've been talking about here over the last couple of months.
I think my intention originally was just to provide the city commission with some information on background on Colliers. We've been doing quite a bit of work for the city horse. I personally have been coming through horse for forty-five years and that's a pretty good perspective. And that, you know, change that you guys are experiencing of course. Um, Colliers is a very large underwriting firm, but our headquarters for us is in Minneapolis. There are five divisions in Minneapolis and it's the same guys that were here twenty years ago, we just have changed our names. And acquired by another securities firm. You may see some information, I've already, that was our last, um, underwriting firm name. And all I did is acquire the, acquire the name. And I think I just handed out continuing disclosure document, that is, uh, Colliers as the. Underwriter for most of your bond issues, all of your bond issues to date. Uh, we've acted as municipal advisor to the city to help plan and determine what type of bonds they should win the, issue the bonds. And then we act as underwriter to purchase the bonds and resell them, um, and then pass on the interest rate for your approval to the city petition. So that's, that's us as municipal advisors, that's us as, uh, underwriters and also. As dissemination agents for the city and dissemination agent responsibility is to keep track of all of your debt. And annually, it's required by the SEC that each, that each city. Files with a, a website, it's called EMA, Electronic Municipal Market Act. And every bond holder, wealthy United States, can then go to the EMA site, click on North Dakota and you'll see every city. And every bond issue that each city has issued and all the information is there specifically for bondholders to look at. To keep track of their holdings as well, but, uh, city municipal people look at it as well to kind of give a picture of where you're at. The dissemination, the continuing disclosure document that I just handed out, no, it's good through two thousand and twenty. We will update it in course at the end of two thousand and twenty-one. And this one, we're doing three bond issues, we must as well, we'll do three bond issues for the city course this year. And just completed a temporary issue. And that was the nine million, ten thousand, we have another temporary issue on our, on the radar for the city. And then we have a definitive issue, which is twenty-some million, which will take out the temporary issue from two thousand and twenty. You've been issuing the temporary bonds to provide the funds, the city, the front, the cost for the development. The city share the development. And when you do the, the temporary bonds, you can then have a close estimate based on the engineer's estimates. On what it's gonna really cost the city, but you don't know for sure. So it provides you the money to the contractors to finish the roads and the infrastructure necessary for the development. And then when that's finished and you have the exact cost from the engineers, we then do what's called definitive financing. Pay out the temporary bonds with the definitive bond, which will have a twenty-year maturity. And that levels out the annual payment to decrease the assessments to people buying the property on an annual basis. That's Colliers in a nutshell, I can sure answer questions. We have been doing. We've been doing, uh, excuse me, the best way to describe it would be a parameters resolution. I like to call it an active seat resolution, you'll see those come through, those are really for the temporary issues specifically. But what we do, when we do a parameters resolution, it allows Colliers as the, as the underwriter negotiating the bond issue. To determine a pricing that's in the interests of the city. So rather than set a specific date, say the bondholders have to buy on that date. We go to the market, we'll come to you with a parameters resolution and if we put two and a half percent in a parameters resolution, we're gonna be conservative. And we, we are going to be looking at probably closer to a two percent bond issue, just for round numbers. And then we go to the market and if it's a three million dollar bond issue and we have four million dollars in orders from retail sales people. Then we will of course, we're oversubscribed, four million dollars out of three million dollar bond issue, so we'll lower the interest rate and go back to those bond holders. And if they're still interested, they'll stay in at a lower interest rate, two, like two-five, and then we're getting closer to the three million they need. It might be three and a half million, we're still oversubscribed, we go back to the market and we'll lower the interest rate again until we get to the point. Where we're getting below the three million dollars and we're losing investors. And the investors are gonna be insurance companies, mutual funds, hedge funds, local banks as well. As we all know, municipal rates are so low right now, we have a lot of financial advisors looking for bonds for people with a better portfolio. It's, you know, half a percent, uh, return, so what we're looking at are those markets. And it, when I, when I say that we've got orders for four million dollars on a three million dollar bond issue, we're oversubscribed. We just keep reducing until we're at the market where the money, the funds you need are there, that's the most interest rate that it's at. We lower the interest rates further, we'll, we'll lose the investors we need to at least come up with three million dollars, that's the size of the bond issue that comes that we need. And when we do a parameters resolution, it's two and a half percent. That allows the financial community to authorize the sale on the dates that we hit the bottom of the market for the pricing. Um, you can't, if, we could come to you with, uh. If the parameters resolution is two and a half percent, we can't come back to three percent and ask the financial community to accept, it has to be two and a half percent or lower. But remember, if we come back with two percent and you still go like that, you can say not, it's always in the city's hands to make the decision. Just because we have a twenty-five percent parameters resolution doesn't mean we have to accept the rate that we came back with. You can, the two point two-five is under the parameters number, but you may say, you know, that the market's two percent. And we usually, they always come with a post-sales analysis, and those are called COPs. Sales that occurred in the same timeframe that the, same security, same maturity, about the same size. Same security meaning taxing of the bond issues and then we can show you that that's about what the range was on that date. So then we, uh, we always do that when we come to person, Corey and Brent have seen that. So Colliers, large underwriting firm, the local guys have been working, same people Craig and I for fifteen years. And David is now president of the company, he started coming here twenty-five years ago. So ultimately, we have, uh, we have done extensive work for the city with, with the ratings group. We did a lot of bond issues in the past without rating, and right now, we're so big, as you look at the chair issue and you can see from. Recent bond issues, we needed to get away with it. We have an investor grade rating that's attracting the investors to buy the bonds. And, um, we have some lengthy conversations, calling participants, Francis participated, with the rating analysts from Moody's.
We'll actually have another one Friday.
Yep.
Yep.
So, um.
So Mike, you wanna just explain a little bit about how that rating that we're doing with Moody's kind of affects what we're getting for like interest rates and the way the bonds work?
Absolutely, a non-rated bond, banks aren't allowed to, well, banks have policies and they don't bid on non-rated bonds. So we need a rating to get the interest in the market and if you, if you have a bond rating. It lets the additional security investors need, they may not wanna read an entire NOS and we've, it'll be two inches thick. But if the rating says, uh, B O A one, they're gonna depend on that, because Moody's did all homework for them. They're not gonna sit and spend hours trying to set, and traders have forty-five minutes to make a decision. They don't literally look at you for three days, they're probably giving four or five seconds in a day. So they quickly, so the rating is what gets the attention and the bond rating will lower your interest rates twenty-five to fifty basis points.
At, at least, I mean, I'm looking at these, the first three here have a Moody's rating and I was a part of the Moody's call, so I understand now what that entails. And the last several don't, and I'm looking at the percentage point difference and.
But, you know, that's a timeframe, when the rates were, were higher to begin with, true, but still, the, the rating is the key. We need to be, we're familiar with the security, we're familiar with the community, familiar with the developers. And that's all the things we talk to the rating analysts about. And you're bigger than us, Colliers participated in the past, from a general research, certain third of the merger project. And we did a couple hundred million dollars of that project, that's not a lot, we paid about three billion, that's a lot for us. That was a important part of, of that decision, we have, uh, we have completed an issue for the city of Fargo. We do all the work for the city of West Fargo and all the communities around here, so we're pretty well, I do thirty to forty bond issues a year in North Dakota. And of course, we've got, we have to give the state office and Sioux Falls, and we do a retail office in Fargo as well. Those are the guys selling bonds that I work on as a investment banker. I'm licensed as a municipal advisor and I'm licensed as a securities professional, which is a investment banker, hundreds of our asset securities classes.
So like I remember too, we had our first meeting with Moody's, it was like a, almost like a job interview for them to us, you know, trying to find out about the city of horse.
A lot of minutia as well.
Yeah, I mean, they didn't know really what we, why we were where we were at and how the history had come. So I remember that sitting in there trying to explain the, you know, why we are moving so quickly, you know, trying to explain that. So it was a little easier this year because they kind of knew that the track was still the same.
But they're getting arms around what the difference means for West Fargo as well as Fargo as well.
Yep, so I mean, it's, it was nice to have that conversation with them this year because we were able to pretty much pick up where we left off with them last time around. And show even more improvement with things, and I think that was great.
And you know, we're, we're moving, Moody's is moving towards, I think Corey's trying to say, a significantly greater comfort level. With the security, because they're understanding the area, they're understanding the city, they're understanding why they know what you're doing.
Yep, so hopefully in a couple of years, we'll get really good bond ratings.
Each, each year is better, we develop a market, we develop the ratings groups understanding. Am I missing anything, Brent?
I would, if you could touch base a little bit on the impacts like audit and cleaning the finances have helped. Uh, helped us, I mean, you touched base a little bit, but specifically like the audit. Um, I know Moody's, they're looking for a couple of year track record, you know? Once we get our third audit, I believe that's gonna be the third really good audit, that's gonna really help us a ton.
Build some reserves.
Yeah.
Understand how you're spending your money, that's judiciously spent, but also on the projects, uh, specific to insurance finance, that helps a great deal. And, 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 you know, it's been, it's been difficult for most communities, they pretty much need an audit annually now. For the continuing disclosure according to SEC refresh, not us, not investors. Um, they wanna see, they wanna see an audit on an annual basis. And if you go to the EMA site, if the city business is a payment, they're materially dead and you by law have to report that. Um, and of course, the audits on the site, your official statements for all of your bond issues under the site, they enter the section from your territory. You know, if you're late to the audit file, which isn't your fault, it's, it's a nightmare for everybody, you have to file a reason. And the state only requires a bi- every two years for the smaller communities, but the feds are not requiring annual, so there's a merge going on there. And you guys have really done well, you know, with your audit for the last two years.
Yeah, I mean, we went to, we used to do every other year, I think it was in twenty seventeen, we went to the annual, because, because the growth we're, we're going through.
More starting far in fifteen, then everybody took years to figure out, and then the afternoon.
There was so much for the auditors to go through, that last two years was just a nightmare because there was just so much, so.
Yep, the last audit was our first to start going on the annual schedule, so we, uh. This year will be, we're just wrapping up the twenty twenty audit, uh, that you'll probably see presented to council in August. Uh, audit findings from, might not, from what have been, brought to my attention have been fairly positive, a little better than even the year before. So, and then the last one was a two-year audit, um, we switched I'd Bailey, uh. That first audit with I'd Bailey took quite a bit, cause it was a two-year one and the first time they ever did, did audit on us. Now it'll be the annual one, so it'll be a little easier, uh, but they've been fairly thorough on our audits for us, so that's good.
And that's been reflected in these meetings too, in the way that we've had since.
Yeah, and as for reserves, we're slowly building up reserves for the different funds we have. We cleaned up our different enterprise funds for utilities and starting to get reserve funds for that. Uh, in the past, what the city did was keep in just what they call fund balance, which would be like your, say like a checking account, for example. For trying to relate to personal, it'd be like your checking account, you have your balance in your checking account, while your reserves would be like your savings account, so.
Sort of pool financing.
Yeah.
Not uncommon, but it doesn't work any somewhere.
Yeah.
For being scrutinized, it's special.
Right, and that's like, so that was something we got talked about when we had our meetings with Moody's first time around, certainly we got talked, dinged on that. Now we're showing that we're able to do it, and I think that's the other thing, they're seeing that, the positive forwardness of the city and that'll reflect well on us as we go forward.
And even, even when you don't do a bond issue, you get looked at by the rating agency on an annual basis, so they can, they can and will operate. I have a community just last year, about sixty dollars down rated during a flood in the eleven, because they spent all of their reserves on their debts. Got down there and you have to do a, do a special assessment, city infrastructure issue at any of these, of course, that costs only for a year or two, but once the reserve for the. Got downgraded, and you have to do a, do a special assessment, certain interest structure issue at any of these, so of course, that cost only for a year or two, but once the reserve for the high company, and he's coming back from the, they can't, but anyways, the rating.
Yeah, and I think that's what we're gonna be doing as well, I mean, just, we're gonna keep working on that and make sure we have those reserves there, so. We talk to them next year, we can even smile a little bit bigger.
Yeah, it, it is nice that you guys all participate in those calls. A lot of years was just me, but I think you've talked to the city, that's all changed as well, and we're talking.
That way they can ask the questions and get it straight from here too, and I think that's good.
Most of our bonds, of course, are special assessment bonds, taxing authority for security, but they're asking about your utilities, they're asking about your kind of reserve. They're not just asking about the development itself, and we sell the lots, and we go to finish the project. And of course, you guys all have required bonds as a developer, so we're not, they're gonna finish the project. And it's not gonna be on the city to finish the project, to sell the lots, to try to collect the taxes.
Right.
Which might happen in the middle of the regular week.
But no, like I said, I think things have gone well with these conversations, and I certainly appreciate your efforts in helping us with that, I think that's, like I said, reflects well.
Craig has worked really well with you guys, he's in Indianapolis, I have the Dismark office, Republic Finance, and we require the office as a retail office for selling the bonds that Craig and I put together, which is a very special one. So I'm all over the state, but I stay in North Dakota.
Okay, so do you guys have any questions? Kind of brought Mike in here, if you guys have any questions on how these, this body that we're doing goes. He kind of gave a, kind of a little overview on it, but.
And we do, I do, most of my business for last year, which was, you know, they were, they were just people, they're just, I mean, all of that here, that's, that's the depot too, for all of the, the game. And there are other, there are other, a couple of other firms, but they kind of specialize in all three, now the issues, and issues like that that would come to cities.
Mike, do you have, I believe it was a parameters resolution for this permanent bond?
I'm not Corey, it's Lucas.
I didn't see him send it to me.
No, he didn't send it out right now.
Okay, I know, we were hoping to have that brought forward.
Yeah, we should have seen.
Okay, so we'll bring it to the next meeting, so there is no action that needs to take.
We're working on the definitive issue, pricing, and one of the temporary issue.
Yep.
And they're both kind of coming at the same time, they're both alive at this point.
Well, I like the interest rates that we got on this, uh, temp bond, that was, that was very good.
Well, you know, we, we have been in the head of the market today, which people always sort of think is correctly correlated to bonds, and then in the sense of influence applied to securities, some interest rates are not too, too. We have the, they're called things, we have the structure for those things in the market, things like that, nothing you're doing hardly, but we're doing this.
Right.
But, um, I think we're done, well, it's a problem, it's a problem.
But I'll take a point six five interest rate on a temp bond.
Yeah, I don't complain a lot, but, and what are the parameters on that one, we're supposed to give a seven?
Was it?
But you don't know, we go high, so we have some leverage, and, and leverage is room, in case something happens in the market that we can anticipate. And maybe you need the money, and if you can come to you at one point seven five, even though the market might be facing a crisis, and you can explain why it's, it's higher. You still have options to accept, which are options to make.
So, so the council's aware too, I am working with Mike, we review, uh, our current bonds that we do have out, we, we do check. Every so often to see, can we revisit those?
Refunding opportunities.
Refunding opportunities and different things like that, so we are looking at those again this year.
Did we get Lakeview added?
That is the next round of temp bonding.
The next round?
Yep, that's the one that are.
Only two districts in this town.
Yep.
Got it.
Uh, there is a decent chance that we probably have three, uh, temp bondings plus our permanent one, so the third one, Mike didn't even know about yet, so.
Well, I do like the example, I'm a little bit of this one.
But we, we like to consolidate them because it keeps the cost down a little bit more.
Yes.
But sometimes it's a timing issue, and you just can't consolidate them as much. But with the interest rates as low as they are right now, um, that's why we're also looking at, doesn't make sense to revisit some of our past bonds. And then see how, what's more beneficial for the city and its residents, so we're reviewing that right now, we're looking at a handful of projects that would make sense for, so.
I suppose the other thing to ask is too, I mean, I would assume there's just a fairly good interest in the market for our bonds.
Yeah, well, and that's what's worked out well, is we've been successful. We brought, we brought clients and investors with us from the past year's experience, the power that you ramp up to the level that you have. And we have, we've developed a market for your bonds, and most people have loaned to you, especially if they're going to temp bonds, so people buy the temp so long, buying to the finance. They have loan portfolios to fill, and they're not just a three-year portfolio, they have a twenty-year portfolio, so they want some of that. And they mobilize the whole issue, but they'll buy a portion of each maturity.
Sure.
They have their own portfolios, and they're trying to turn that around, you know, and, so yeah, it's, that's worked out really well, and we've kind of pretty much built any basis.
Perfect, no, it's good, it's good. Okay?
Mike, you know your stuff, thank you for coming.
I, I wanna say, because I did mention I have a ton of time to do perspective, but the last five years have really been fun.
I bet, I bet.
Yep, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll jump back to fourteen. Thanks again, Mike, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike. Okay. This one here, I just want to touch base with in regards to the twenty twenty-two budget. As mentioned before, I like to piecemeal these, I don't like to come to you with the whole darn thing at one time because, but the budget's so big. What I want to do is touch base on a few of them, the general fund, highway fund, and sewer fund, uh, just some of the high-level bigger changes that are being reflected in this budget, and to prepare you for what you'll probably see within the preliminary budget that was brought to council. Well, I remind everybody on the preliminary budget, that when we do have the preliminary budget for general fund, that's in regards to your mills or your property tax revenue. The mills, once you set that rate, you can't go any higher, but you have to go lower. I will remind everybody that frequently, because that's something to consider, and we could still have more discussions to fine to the budget for general fund. We are in a, we will probably be facing a situation where, depending on what we do with law enforcement, that's going to be your biggest influencer on the mills this year. And I'll get that, into that one in just a little bit here. Within the general fund, some of the areas considered within that, uh, the general fund, we're budgeting two hundred sixty new homes. As we were talking about building permit data and new homes, we're at two hundred, what'd they say, two hundred twenty-eight? New homes here, or that have been applied for, two twenty-seven right now. That's why I anticipate that two sixty is very likely, it'll probably be higher. With, within that budget, we do not budget a whole lot into the commercial side for building permit revenue. The reason why is commercial is so volatile compared to residential homes. If we have, so, you know, a handful of res, or commercial permits, which we hope to have, the, you know, within the next year or two. Hopefully we'll have some even this fall, but we don't want to rely on that, so that helps us in case our numbers are off a little bit on the residential side. Property tax, uh, currently in our draft budget, the only increase we have is reflected is due to property increase, here, is due to increase in valuation. What we are doing right now in our scenarios for the budget is keeping the mills the same, we're trying to do that as much as possible. If you'd have to go up on mills, I don't foresee us having to go any higher than three mills as of right now. But I do see it as right now, depending on what we do with law enforcement, we could keep it the same. If you don't add another deputy this year, and we stay at two, we'll probably be able to keep the mills the same. If we add a deputy, uh, to get a third one, that's when it starts going up a little bit. To add one deputy, we're probably looking at around two mills, maybe three. To add two deputies, we'd be looking at probably about a five mill increase or so. Uh, I have approached the diversion authority, their director, asking them, with the diversion, and it's expected to happen probably late this year, but in, really into next year, we'll probably see, oh, a lot of that change in amount of workforce down here next year. I've asked them if they would help us out with covering the costs of a deputy. What he has done is he has approached Cass County, and we're going to get some meetings set up. I've talked to Cory and Naomi about trying to get a meeting set up, it'll probably be in early to mid-August about having that conversation of would the county be able to help us out, maybe provide another deputy down here in which they would be using also to help the diversion authority. The reason why is because that it's anticipated workforce, probably around fifteen hundred, maybe two thousand people, could be even higher. All down here in a pretty small area. So with that increased presence, all the construction traffic down here, plus all the homes being built, everything going on we anticipate there could be some problems with, um, different issues that construction sites may face, and also the public traffic issues and different things like that.
I'm gonna tell you right now, um, the last thing that we want to do is, is defund the police, okay? I've heard a lot about this, and I'm just gonna get out there and say it. I've lived in communities that have had, and worked in communities that have had an influx of people that have come into the community. And I will be very blunt when I say that the crime increases, people steal things, okay? We need as much help as we can get with the building permits that are coming, with the anticipated amount of workers that are coming. I mean, Ross, God bless you, you guys have done a wonderful job up to this point, but you can't do it by yourselves, right? And I wear red, white, and blue, and I have an American flag on my shoulder for a reason, because I believe very, very strongly in the safety of our community and the safety of our children. And if it's a matter of upping by a mill or two to keep that in place so that our children can walk down the street safely and our people don't have to worry about their homes getting broken into, so be it.
Yep.
I feel very strongly about that, and I'm gonna voice that opinion here and now, and I will vote that way when it comes down to it. I know our neighboring communities are looking at increases substantially higher than what we're looking at, so, um, something to take into consideration and something not to take lightly.
Yep, and I met with our neighboring communities today, our, my peer, the peers, uh, for administrators, and that was a conversation is bill increases, and yes, some of our neighbors, I agree with you, they are looking at even more substantial than what we're talking here tonight, you know? If you add even two deputies, that's, they're talking increase in mills even more than that for some of our neighbors, so.
Do we know, um, a couple things, the, like, living situation for these workers? And then also, like, how, what the projected timeframe of them being, like, in our area before they move on?
I do not know as much, um, I do know that you have some builders that are building rental homes and stuff, obviously for, probably trying to account for some of that. But not their sole model. We've had some developers and builders discuss possibility of, like, we had one in particular, he brought up the idea of having a, like, a area of land that could support not like a trailer home, not quite a man camp type thing, but something. That conversation was probably about six months, nine months ago, and it fizzled out, we haven't heard any other conversation about that, and so. I think you're gonna see quite a bit of demand for housing up here, even more so than what we already have.
A lot of people in my heartbeats, and they'll be looking for places to park.
Right, that's gonna be the deal. I mean, it's just, what people don't understand yet is there's going to be an influx of an awful lot of people in a very short period of time in a smaller space than everybody understands. What we're trying to do here is get a hold of this a little bit, because it's not just law enforcement, there's all the infrastructure issues that we're gonna be dealing with, the traffic is gonna increase substantially, uh, it's gonna be truck traffic and, you know, pickup traffic, just like what happened out west, it's gonna be about this, we're gonna be in a similar situation come next spring, so we have to get ahead of this a little bit, uh, we are gonna have to get some law enforcement. It's just whether we can get the, uh, you know, county and the diversion to help us pay for that, or whether we're gonna have to come up with the nickel ourselves. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna try and work with the county and see what we can come up with on that, and see if we can get them to cover it, if not, we're probably gonna have to look at something.
I would like to do everything we can to get them to see the, the need, because.
Oh, they see it, they do.
I mean, I, as much as I agree with Sarah, it, I mean, the residents have taken a huge hit when it comes to, um, the cost of living here and the tax increases, and, I mean, I agree a hundred percent, we need to have a safety. I'm absolutely for that, but I also want to make sure we do everything we can to try to help the residents too with costs, so.
And that, and that's why.
Having that conversation is really important.
Yep.
Yeah, and that's why, yes, we're trying to push for that conversation. I do believe that we do have quite a bit of support from the county commission, uh, they have been fairly positive and receptive to the dialogue. I know I, when I've had conversations with either commissioners or, like, their administrator or sheriff John or, I know Cory has spoken with some of those individuals too. I think one of the biggest challenges we're gonna run across too is the county being able to find people. Yep, staffing is a huge challenge.
Ross, I mean, there, there's been some talk about that, just getting folks, even come on board is gonna be a trick.
I, I even, I was at the county fair last week, and even the deputies there, that, some of them that didn't know me, they were, they were even trying to get me to apply to be a deputy, and I'm going, nah.
Everybody's gotta know their limits, right?
Yeah, I know my limits, and it's not that, so, uh, but anyways.
Maybe that is something, you know, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pursue or kind of tail off of that conversation a little bit. You know, it wouldn't be a bad thing to have a, a small group of folks that maybe are retired veterans, military, law enforcement, something like that. That would be willing to look into some sort of a, a short-term deputization or something to help us in this interim, I, it's.
I mean, aren't there programs like that?
There are, but I tell you what, a lot of people locally don't get us involved, and this is serious, I, I take this very seriously, because I work in communities. I've worked in Watford City, I've worked in Williston, where there were, you know, two hundred thousand people that literally, literally swamped the community. And there was no place to live, there were man camps going up everywhere, there were tent cities, there were, and it, it created an entirely different dynamic in the city than what we want to see here. Now, we want to invite people to live and work here and, and be successful, but there's a right way and a wrong way to do it, and I agree with you, Cory, a hundred percent. Getting in front of this is very, very important right now, and taking a very serious, hard look at the possibility of having some of those folks maybe help these guys out, you know, just as a, a backup plan for events or things like that, it, it really doesn't hurt.
I know that every single one of us has, you know, younger children, and it is scary to think about any kind of crime happening. I mean, it's gonna be everywhere, but, I mean, I get what you're saying, I completely a hundred percent agree, I just want to make sure that we're doing it smart as well, and making sure we're having those conversations with them.
Yep. Other items here, value of mill, information for you to know, value of mill, uh, the county did their property valuations and the breakout comes to a mill value of being just over twenty-one thousand dollars, so it's twenty-one thousand, two hundred forty-four dollars and eighty-four cents. That number obviously changed a little bit as they refine their valuations, uh, but it's gonna be pretty darn close to that. Other areas impact, revenues, franchise fees, we are going through our final touch-ups to our franchise agreement ordinance with Cass County Electric. I anticipate and hope that we'd be able to bring that to council and to you in August. Uh, it's taken a little longer than what we liked, but I know that that has been the most robust. The most robust franchise agreement that city has, the most.
Detailed.
And comprehensive one, but it's also the biggest one dollar-wise for the city. Um, but we are working with their staff there and their CEO for Cass County Electric to get this resolved. Uh, right now, I believe their attorneys are doing one last re- or one more review on it. And like I said, I hope to bring that to council here in August, that's my goal. But that would be showing a higher amount for franchise fees. Um, right, right now, we're on budget, budget around fifty to sixty thousand. Uh, once that agreement is in place, then they'll probably be looking around a hundred thousand or more, so, yep, that will be helpful. Total general fund budget, we're looking at be around two point one million. If we do additional deputies, that budget will be higher. If you add to, one deputy, it'll be around ninety thousand more, if you add two, it'll be around a hundred eighty thousand additional. And I'm giving you a rough ballpark on that.
Yeah, because we haven't got any numbers back yet from Cass County.
I did, I did get the contract amount for next year for two deputies.
That's what I'm saying.
And that'd be just over a hundred eighty thousand.
Basic on that.
Yeah, uh, so I had to stress too is that when we, like our contract with the county. We're covering salary and benefits in, in a nutshell, they're covering equipment, training, different things like that. It's about a fifty-fifty breakout right now, uh, with our agreements with them. So it's really important when we do ask for additional help deputy-wise, it costs the county quite a bit also. And that's why there's hesitancy at times, we wanted to add another deputy this year. Uh, we backed off of it because we, uh, in conversation with Sheriff Johnner and with some of the commissioners. It didn't sound like we really had the support at the commission level at the time, that's what it sounded like, so we didn't push it as hard. Um, and also there were still concerns of getting staff. And the county was looking at budget cuts, the sheriff's department and all the other departments last year at budget time, they were talking budget cuts. They had to do not increases, so.
Um, so I, I'm really sorry to, to bring this up again, so talking about law enforcement then, I mean, is. Um, Sheriff John or, I mean, what are we, if he can't get the help that he needs? I mean, with this diversion and everything and all these people coming here.
You're gonna help me recruit?
I, I would say I.
If they, if, like, let's say we go to this meeting and then they approve it to help us. What if we can't even find the help, what if we can't even?
I think that's what they position, you have the challenge at times. Um, I could say that I have. I have not seen the county be this aggressive with recruiting for a position, Ross, I don't know if you could attest on it or not. But I've noticed they have really pushed hard for recruiting. I don't wanna walk you into anything.
Couple thoughts, money isn't my forte, it feels weird to wear this and talk about money you guys owe us, it's strange. Um, we're hitting recruiting harder now, the jail is quite a few people down for uh, people. Uh, they're running pretty much minimum right now, uh, the way our, our hierarchy kinda works, like you get on patrol and, and Cass County typically, as you start in the jail. Uh, you either are licensed or become licensed and you get selected to patrol, um, so obviously the jail being short has a stagger effect with patrol. Um, I think, I think we're full on patrol right now, but we had a couple openings come up, so it, we'll be a little bit short as well, but we're fully staffed. Um, in the past, when we haven't been able to get people from the jail, we have opened it up to outside um, folks to come in and work for us from other agencies. Matt Moon with our truck rig was Fargo, uh, we had a gentleman from James Town come, he's now on our, um, one of our drug task forces, but. Um, so it is an option, um, if you need us to get creative, and I can't speak for Sheriff John or I never would, sorry sir. Never would speak for the man, but uh, uh, if we need to get resourceful, I'm quite certain we could.
Yeah.
Um, he feels stronger about community speaking than anyone I've ever met, and he preaches it and he means it, so. Um, if it's something you guys are legitimately worried about and I see you are, then um, he'll do everything he can to.
Yeah.
To get it going and, and I'm not sure if he's included in that meeting you're gonna have with the.
We're gonna be reaching out to him.
Okay, I certainly would, he's definitely gonna wanna be there.
Yep.
Um, I'd like to be there, but I don't know, I'm just kinda me, I'm not sure to listen to me much, but um, you know, I've, I volunteered for a third year here for a reason. I, I like Horace a lot, I, I love this community, I love the people, if I have to volunteer for a fourth or fifth to make it work for three or four deputies, I will. Um, I shouldn't admit that on camera probably. But I will, I mean, I'll do anything, you know, um, you know, you're, you're, you have a lot of unique situations as it is and it's only gonna get more unique as everything happens. Um, as far as deputizing outside people, I don't know. Uh, the sher- the sheriff, the sheriff definitely has the ability to do that. Um, but we, and not to your own horn or sound pretentious, we have a pretty high level of training and standards we keep. Um, so getting those people up to speed on the training they need or that we see fit and then they have to come and train on the road with us for a few months. By the time that happens, how deep are you gonna be in the, in the stuff, you know, I mean, how, how bad could it get, I'm not ruling it out by any means.
No, but let's look at some.
There would certainly be some challenges with that, but I mean, there's challenges with everything, so.
Yeah.
Good to know, good to know.
I do, I do know, uh, for example, like the SRO officer at schools, they're deputized. That's cause they're a West Fargo police officer, they're deputized so they can do law enforcement in Horus.
Have jurisdiction within the county, yeah. And, and I'm not saying this has to be a full-on program, I'm just saying in a maybe very unique situation. Or emergency situation where you guys have to call on some additional help, wouldn't it be nice to have an additional couple people that you could call on?
Well, that happens quite, that happens probably quite a bit more than you think it does, not, um, just not too long ago, Deputy Keller had a guy fight with him in, in. Um, Lost River, I was in Castleton dealing with something, we have him working at the same time. Uh, he called for a West Fargo officer to help, cause we can call for mutual aid and anyone can come, three came before I even got close. So we, we, we tend to take care of each other, I'm not saying that's always gonna be available. Um, state troopers, Fargo PD, Clay County will come over, Morehead will come over. Um, we chased a guy from south of Horus here into Morehead before Minnesota's laws got a little different than ours and they spiked him for us and took care of it. So we're all, we're all very much so in it together kinda thing and it's not the most immediate response, but it's usually pretty quick. Especially West Fargo being so close.
I mean, that, that makes me feel a little bit better knowing that they can come over if they, if they can.
And the, and the troopers are usually always around, my trooper friends, you go home at midnight, other than that, uh, they're usually pretty close as well and they're all. There's three or four troopers that live in town.
Yeah.
So if something really big happened, those boys would suit up pretty quick and, and, and come up as well, so.
Good.
That's my piece, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ross.
What we need to know, we need to understand this better.
We'll have that conversation here fairly soon, try and get that started.
So that you haven't had like a time set up yet?
No.
No.
And uh, like I said, it's probably gonna be in early August, early to mid-August when we're gonna have that conversation. Cause trying to coordinate those schedules, uh, is a little difficult, so we're trying to coordinate with the county commissioner too. And the county minister, Sheriff John or, and then yourself and Cory and I, so it's. Quite a few schedules to coordinate, so that's why we wouldn't be able to get a meeting.
Yeah.
With short notice and I don't think it's one to rush, but we'll be working towards getting something here in early August, that's our goal.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, on expenses tied to general fund, uh, we are looking at COLAs. A lot of the cities are looking between three and five percent right now is what they're looking at. Um, I don't like to lock that down until we have. The, their draft budget to council, cause it always could change a little bit. Right now, the consumer price index, cost of living is over five percent. So it gives you a comparison, how the federal government, my understanding, now I could be wrong, so I, just based on some of the readings I've had. My understanding is they'll take, so let's say your percent, your uh, CPI is five point two percent. Or even five point eight percent, let's say five point eight, they will round down, so go five percent and then they go down a full percent after that. So the federal government is gonna look at four percent. Now, that's just my understanding off of reading up on this a little bit. Um, and like I said, the chatter around the state, a lot of the communities are looking at between three and five. So that's, that's what we're looking at right now, I have a placeholder right now at four. But we'll see what the CPI does here as it, as we have another month or two pass.
Yeah.
Um, in my draft budget, I do account for some deputy help, a part-time one. But that really probably doesn't do a whole lot based on the dialogue that we've had tonight. Uh, another difference that we have is we're accounting funds for real estate taxes slash specialist, special assessment payments. The city, we did take on with like the seventy-six roundabout project, we took on more debt than average property. Um, on some city owned like pawn lots, so we have eighty thousand dollars accounting for special assessment payments. And property taxes for the city. Um, we were able to pull those dollars from a pre- a different fund in the past, uh, where it's just for property taxes. Now we're going to be in the general fund with it. Um, state aid for fire, or sharing the state aid, fire and parks, we share ten percent of each of those. So it comes out to forty-six thousand total. If our revenues are not what we have budgeted, they only get ten percent still. So every quarter, they get ten percent of the state aid that is shared, you're given to the city. And then we have money put aside in our draft budget, we show um, thirty thousand for equipment reserve for purchasing a new vehicle for building inspections. Right now, we don't have enough vehicles for our building inspectors to be able to get around. So we'd be budgeting some money to put in an equipment reserve and then we could go in, order a vehicle with that. Uh, those are the highlights within general fund, also general fund would be helping out the highway fund. Get the dollar amount here, as of right now, we're showing it, helping out the highway fund around a hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. The highway fund, going into that next fund to talk about, highway fund is our, probably the one fund in particular. That does not have a revenue source that is sustainable for the needs of it. Uh, we have our highway tax dollars from the state, I guess that's about half the dollars that we need for the highway fund. General fund helps it out, we transferred the remaining amount over, so a hundred thirty-five roughly is what we're looking at, we transfer over to the highway fund. Um, we do see a slight increase with the highway tax distribution due to increase in our population. Based on the census numbers that we're looking at, uh, that increase isn't drastic though. We're looking at about eight to ten thousand dollar increase. Um, expenses, what we did is we changed the percent cut or cost for. Our public work staff, public works is covered, like salaries is covered through highway fund, sewer and water. We changed the percent breakout to where we reduced it in the highway fund and increased it for water and sewer. The logic behind it is with all the different construction activity going on in Horus, uh, like fiber going in, util- different utilities going in. Uh, new developments, all these different things, the amount of time our staff spends on doing utility locates has greatly increased. So that's why we're ch- we're gonna be proposing to change that breakout.
Why don't we have a separate fund for staffing? Why, why do we pull it out of highway and sewer and water?
All of our other staff is in the general fund, public works are within the utilities.
Okay.
So that's, gets to keep it separated a little bit.
I'm asking the question, cause I'm looking at the balance sheet here, I'm looking at the fund activity and I'm just curious. How that breaks out and where the staff is located, okay?
Yep, so public works, it would be roughly a third for each fund now. Where before it was about fifty percent salary was, salary was covered in highway fund. And then thirty percent was water and twenty percent I believe was sewer.
So the highway fund you said is not sustainable.
It has to have, it has to have help from the general fund. Yeah, it doesn't have, it has at least flexibility.
Yeah.
Where the other funds like water and sewer, they're supported through utility rate fee, so that's why.
Is there a better way to do that?
I wish there was.
I'm, I'm asking because.
Uh, other communities I've worked with too, that's the same thing they do, is they subsidize the ju- general fund, subsidize highway fund. But you only do it to get by, you keep the dollars in general fund as much as possible. Because the general fund is a, has less restrictions on how the dollars can be spent, highway fund is more restrictive.
Okay, we can.
Yeah.
Take that discussion ultimately, just asking some general questions.
Um, expense-wise for highway fund, we've also increased the equipment leasing. Uh, in order to rent lift trucks to be able to, or boom truck to be able to do banners, holiday lights, different things like that. We rent that, we have not purchased one, at some point, we may come to council requesting to purchase one. Uh, we do have a grant through works of work, workforce safety initiative, WSI, or the Workman's Comp provider.
Don't purchase.
We could do that if we wanted to, renting costs us about six hundred dollars each time.
The maintenance?
Oh, I know.
You'll run yourself into the ground. Especially with that place right up on Fifty Second Avenue there.
Yep. Uh, the last area I have, and just a really quick touch base on sewer fund, is there's an increase budgeted for. Uh, hookup and tap fees, that's every new home that's built has to pay seven hundred fifty dollars for a hookup tap fee. That goes towards the sewer fund. And then also our change in utility rate for uh, the sewer fund that happened last year. That is going to pack this budget where you'll see it now, the impacts for it, so that's why you see increasing revenues. And then the expenses, we changed the breakout, like I was saying, of contributions from the sewer fund for staff. A lot of the other expenses have been fairly, fairly similar, uh, you'll also see, like we talked about CIP wise. Where we account for dollars for doing like manhole repair and some actual preventive maintenance, things like that, so. That's what I have for the twenty twenty-two budget, if you have any other questions. I did not get into water, water is the most complex budget, I do that one last. Typically when I start drafting the budget, because there's so many variables with water, based on weather, usages. Customers, there's a lot more variables that impact your water budget than any other budget that we have.
Okay, any questions other than?
Okay.
Alright, then if not, we'll move on to the, Jim, you got number sixteen.
Yeah, I got fifteen.
Oh, you're right, okay, sorry, I was ahead of my song, alright, I'll give you fifteen.
I know budget was really exciting, I apologize. Jeff looks forward to it, that's why he has his coffee. Uh, utility rate, what I wanna do is just touch base, make sure council you are aware of this as a reminder. Back in October twenty twenty, the city council approved rate increases, they wanted to do this as a stepped approach. Not all at once. Um, the stepped approach would be to get us, at the end of the day, would be get us up to. Pretty much mere casserole water, except for we have a, the surcharge tied to like capital improvements. Um, in addition to that, but. Effective on nine one twenty twenty-one, now this rate has been delayed twice now. I would not recommend delaying it again, because that would, that could hurt us with loan funding with the state. So state revolving loan funds, that could complicate things for us. Uh, but the rate increase that we have in place starting September one twenty twenty-one. The base will go up from twelve to nineteen fifty and cost per thousand will go from three to four twenty. So I wanna make sure you are aware of that, we will be sending out note, you know, notices within the utility bill. We'll have information being spread out to the users, so they're aware of this. But you know why, we want, the council wanted to delay those rate increases until the projects for water started. They wanted to make sure that the ground was being broken, new wire lines were going in, that cat, connection to casserole were happening. The second utility rate increase, the intentions of the council at the time were to. The second utility rate increase, the intentions of the council at the time were to have that rate go in. After we've gone live with casserole water. So they wanted to make sure that that second up, it might be we're on casserole, go live for a month, for two months, whatever. But they wanted to make sure we were live and hiccups kind of got worked out a little bit, that were, that was their intention. So, but like I said, this first rate increase, they wanted to make sure dirt was getting moved, residents could actually see things are happening, so. Yeah. Uh, I did include, you can see on the screen here, here are some comparisons to other communities. Now, these are, a lot of folks want to compare us to smaller communities or communities across the state. So this gives you a sample of what some of our other communities within the state of North Dakota have. At the end of the day, what we'd be going towards, that second utility rate increase gets us to a base of twenty-seven and a cost per thousand of five forty. To give you a comparison, I'll take the city of Mott for example, thirty-four dollars for a base, seven fifty for cost per thousand. That's after the first four thousand, so the base covers the first four thousand gallons. But you look at the city of Verona, for example, they have a base of forty-five dollars and a cost per thousand of six. I add in two of our neighbors, Kindred, twenty-eight, twenty-three for a base, six sixty-one, cost per thousand. Uh, Castleton, their base is twenty, your first eight thousand gallons, your cost per thousand is eight fifty. But if you go over that eight thousand gallons, every thousand gallons after that is ten fifty. Now, some other communities are lower, I pulled these numbers off of, uh, the League of Cities, they have a listserv. And this was a conversation from the auditors over the last couple of weeks here, they're asking what everybody's utility rates were. And these were the responses that different auditors across the state were giving. So, uh, Kindred, Castleton, I looked those up off their website, I verified them today. Uh, from the last time I looked at Kindred, I believe their rate was a little less than what it is now, so. Uh, they, I believe they did a rate increase not too long ago. Uh, both Kindred and Castleton are on casserole water. So you're, you're aware, that is a good comparison of rates there, so. Want to make sure council was aware of this, I will have information out to you about. Like this data, so you know what's going on. I'll, I've been talking with Jim about getting a fact sheet together with just different facts about the wireline project, connection to casserole. Utility rates, we'll have some different content that we'll be getting out to council here in the near future, so you have that too, so you're aware of.
And then also to know like how the community already pays this rate that we're going up to.
Yes, actually probably more users than not already are paying like the casserole rate right now, so. Majority of our new developments are in the casserole service area. Uh, well, I'd say actually about half of them are.
Three quarters.
Three quarters, so. Uh, Terra Gardens, Lakeview, Arrowhead Third, those are Horace.
Yeah.
Service area.
Horace has really good plans in place to upgrade their water system. I'm pleased with that because let's face it, it's long overdue. Um, but raising these rates, I agree with what previous council had in mind. We need to have dirt moving, we need to have something in place before we're gonna make people pay more for what was already there. Because what was already there was a struggle, so I'm in complete agreement with that.
Yep.
Plus it was stepped out over time, so it wasn't such a jump, I mean, it's, it's going up, but it wasn't such a jump.
We've had enough jumps, so I, I really appreciate the effort put to take this into a more tiered approach, so it's more reasonable for people.
Yep.
That's really a big deal, thank you for that.
Yep. That's all I had on our.
Alright, alright, Jim, you're up.
Alright, you will all be seeing in your email in the next week, I want to put together a summary sheet for each one of these construction projects. Something that can be sent out with the packet, so we don't have to just talk about this verbal, it's something for you to look at, something for you to. Study and then have questions at the city council meeting if you so like. So what I'm looking for right now is just feedback on the information that's on here. If there's something that you want to know that isn't on here, this is just a bare bone skeleton. If there's something you want to know about these projects, let me know, we'll get it on all of the projects. And that's my plan going forward, starting with these twenty twenty-one construction ones. The twenty twenty stuff, we can still talk about that if you want, it might not be as formal as, as the one sheet. But we'll still get it out there, so you have it in, in advance as part of the package for your review, so you have a better idea of what's, what's going on versus just verbal, so. But, uh, we'll go through nine of the projects tonight, we'll make it relatively quick. So, uh, the first one on the list is Maple Lake Estates. This one is getting pretty hot right now, it's getting close to being done, the completion date was the end of June, so here we are in the middle of July.
Still not done?
It's still not substantially complete, so remaining items are streetlights, we have three of them up right now. And they need to be tipped up operational for lighting of the right of way. There's some topsoil on the boulevards that was completed over the weekend. Sanitary sewer lift station controls, storm sewer lift station controls, electrical to the site, there was supposed to be a meeting this afternoon, but they got canceled with our pop-up storm. And then our Lomar fill has been surveyed, but the, preparing the supplemental documents for Lomar is what's going on right now. So if the contractor asks you, he will be done by the end of the week, I think it might be next week, but it's relatively within.
We're within a window here.
We're, 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 yes, yes, so, uh, there are, the home builders out there are very antsy and we are holding pat that we aren't letting them in there until it's absolutely ready to be used, so.
And utilities.
And utilities, that's it, yeah, that's what the electric.
Would you send me an email on the LD clause?
Certain, it's the same one that you have, but I will send it to you.
It's the same one that I have?
It's DJCC one.
I want a number of days and want to know what still needs to be done.
Certainly. I will have that done tomorrow. Last year, fifth edition is complete, except for the shared use path lighting, those lights are scheduled to ship in August, so within a couple of weeks. Southdale Farms first edition, project is complete, working on the final paperwork at the moment, working on the special assessments. We did get some comments back from a developer on the special assessments, so we are incorporating those. Southdale Farms third edition, water and sanitary sewer is complete, storm sewer is about twenty-five percent complete as of this morning. And there's done some minor street prep work, so that one is on schedule, they aren't willing to give any type of a completion date other than what's specified, just to not shorten anything, so. Things are moving along good there. Terra Gardens third edition, site stripping has begun, that was started late last week. No underground work or anything else has been started on that project. Uh, Lakeview addition, pre-con was last week. And the corn crop in the right of way has been cut for silage and delivered to a farmer, but the notice of proceed has not been issued. As you remember, this was a, a notice of a war based on contingencies.
Yeah.
We did have a meeting on Friday on the improvement district, and I think we're squared away on that now, it's just the plumbing, is that correct?
Yes, it's the, making sure all the bonding, the wheels are in motion for the bonding. Uh, once we have, um, a set sale date for bonding and different, or milestones like that with. Uh, working the colliers, then we'll probably sign that notice of proceed, because by the time we get our first bill and it's due, we'll have the bond funds in hand. We want to make sure the bond funds are going to be in hand by the time we get the first bill. Because we don't want to have a bill, say a million dollars and then have to dip into all the different funds we have to pay it.
You don't want to do that, huh?
No, we don't do that, so.
Okay, water meter replacement project, we had a pre-construction conference last Thursday, scheduled to start within the next couple of weeks. The cured and placed pipe, which is Willow Court, uh, behind, between Nelson and, and Main, is going to be the first thing to start in the first part of August. We also have some exploratory excavation, because we're not quite sure what we're dealing with underneath the, when we get down there, so we have quite a bit of exploratory excavation that will be taking place in the next week or so. We did start going around, our public work started going around last week identifying valves and whatnot to isolate the system, so there's minimal disruptions. If there are any disruptions, it would be, like I said, very minimal, and the houses will be placed on temporary water while the, uh, water main work is going, so. Same water, it'll just be temporarily fed to the house instead of through the, through the mains.
While we're talking about water, what happened with the main that got hit over by Casey's here, not that long ago?
They clipped it with the reamer on the way back, when they're pulling back.
Clipped it with the reamer?
Yeah.
Had they called and located?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
They had. Why were they that close?
My understanding is that it was not located.
That's what I understand too.
One of our mystery lines. We have a lot of mystery lines.
Yeah, we'll have a few more of those.
There was a jog in the line that wasn't marked.
Okay.
So. Yeah.
Yep, they know it now.
Discovery.
And that has been added, it's been updated now to the locate maps and.
Yes, yes, it has. Connecting to casserole water users, this item was discussed at the state water commission's, Brett and I said, subcommittee meeting on July eighth. No questions were asked, I think that's a good sign for funding here in the second Thursday, or the first Thursday in August. So, plan has open bids that week, presented to the state water commission at their August meeting for construction funding, so. I think that that will, I have, I think that that'll be, they'll approve it myself, just because they did on the pre-construction stuff, so.
When is that, Jim, when is that meeting again, the water, the state water commission, is that the second Thursday in?
No, let me. Let's see here, August, it is eighth, eighth of August. Cause you meet on the.
The second is our next meeting, right?
Hmm, oh wait, I'm in the wrong month. It's the twelfth. You meet the second, you're right, you meet August second, they meet the twelfth.
Okay, alright.
So like I said, watch for this in your email and just provide comments, don't take the information on there as fact, but I just want to get the content on there correct with what would be helpful to you as an elected body.
Any questions for Jim? Alright.
Okay, we'll go on to the number seventeen then, Brett, we got this one. Can I slow down to give you time to write?
I know, give me a chance to read. Okay, first item I have is one update for you about our video system, we're, we've experienced quite a few different issues with our video system. Sometimes it works, sometimes, sometimes it doesn't. We have Tricor coming, I believe on Wednesday to work with it. Evaluate, see what is going on with our sys- video system. Uh, live streaming, we've been using it, or testing out a service called Bo- Boxcast, that has been working fairly well for us, knock on wood. But like I said, Tricor will come and troubleshoot our video system here on Wednesday, so. We have tried troubleshooting it with Raytech and checking to see if it was our computers, internet connection. Now we're checking the camera system and the video system that we have.
So why, can I just ask why you need that one if we're doing the live and then it up, is it, isn't it automatically uploading?
It's to give us a, to be able to run our video system, they're separate, they're a separate deal. And you have to have that video system to feed the live stream.
Oh, okay, I got you.
They work together.
I got you, okay.
So, yeah. Uh, just a heads up, July thirtieth is the deadline for finance director position, so applications are due July thirtieth.
Have you received any?
Four, so far, that was an update from Baker Tilly last week, he sent me that. Uh, and then last item I had is North Dakota League of Cities has their annual conference, September sixteenth through the eighteenth. If any council members would like to go, please let me know, so we could get registrations and logistics worked out for you. Uh, that is considered a workshop training, so any of the council can go, we don't have a quorum issue when you are going to a training like that.
I would recommend that all the new council members attend this one.
If this is in Bismarck, Bismarck events are, uh, League of Cities is typically a fairly good conference. For elected officials to go to, so.
It does fall on young chipper.
I don't schedule it. I'll let, I'll let, I'll let Blake from League of Cities know.
Yep, that's, that's his ball game, we stay out of that.
A little levity to the meeting, we need a little levity here.
May- maybe he has an event planned for you.
We'll leave, we'll leave it in his capable hands.
There you go.
Is that what you wish I would?
It is.
Yeah. Just guessing.
It is. Yep.
But like I said, if you do, if you are interested, if you have any questions, anything, please let me know, so we can get the logistics worked out for that.
Plus we get, uh, if you do it a little earlier, we can get a break on the rooms, stuff like that, so I don't want to wait till last minute with us if we don't have to.
Rooms do fill up.
Quickly.
Quickly around, uh, the Bismarck Event Center for this conference, so.
Alright, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Alright, I'm Port Forty. Met with Sally here last week to get started on the hundred fiftieth anniversary deal, uh, some ideas. I think what we're gonna do here first was get a steering committee started, um, and so we're probably gonna put a call out for that soon. Um, probably starting in August, we'll put a call out and try and get some people involved in the steering committee and let them start deciding. Um, all the other aspects of this, but I think this will be fun. Uh, looking back at some old, uh, history, uh, is entertaining to say the least. Hopefully we can bring some of that brevity and all the, the fun that has gone on before when we do this again, so. Other thing here, uh, Ready Tech is going to be doing groundbreaking on July twenty-seventh up here. I'll be representing the city for that, so I think that'll be kind of cool, getting some technology. Uh, getting fiber into the town and just all the economic, uh, possibilities that come with that, I mean, are just, uh, eye opening, so I'm looking forward to this. So I'll be up there for that. Sarah, you got?
Not too much, actually, I, uh, was down with double pneumonia this last week, so I was off work and I wasn't able to attend Plodding and zoning. Um, so I had a lot of catching up to do, um, this next week, and we already have meetings scheduled, which is good. I am very interested in the hundred fiftieth, so please, um, tap me on that one, I'd like to hit that. And, um, just update some things, I don't want to sound like too much of a hard ass, but we were pretty clear about getting things finished on timelines and deadlines. With, uh, particular contractors in the past, and I want to make sure that they understand how absolutely imperative it is that we hit our timelines and deadlines. When we have bonding and things of the nature that are involved, because it costs us money every time we have to keep those bonds and that funding available, open. Good, that's all I have right now.
Alright.
I don't really have much of anything.
Okay. Alright, Chelsea?
Call for parade registration.
Okay.
Definitely, um, we're gonna push a lot of that for bean days coming up. And I'll say to, to you guys that haven't been to League of Cities, I did go once and it was really, it was really, um, informative and the different, uh, seminars, I don't know what they call them, but. That you go to, I, you know, I definitely learned some important things when I was there. This is kind of, maybe a weird thing to ask, but can the contractors like come to our meetings and have to like be responsible and give us an update? I mean, could we say, I mean, obviously with the jobs that we've already had, but maybe future jobs, you know, maybe every like couple of months, they have to come and give their own update.
Yeah, we can add to the requirements. We can add it to the requirements, yeah.
Um, that might put a little pressure on them and they can answer this, Sarah.
Sure.
And then I, I did want to note that the, like, I'm helping the city with their layout, uh, pro bono, I guess, just not charging time for that. Um, and then I know that you guys have, you guys are always getting like, um, asks and different things, but I do want to push on the trees for these new developments again. Um, we talked, you talked about like the sewer hookup fees and stuff that are, um, charged to these guys and. You know, what, if, if we were to hire somebody else out to take care of it and it wasn't within our staff, what would we have to charge? You know, what would we have to charge these people? Uh, I do think like, obviously, once the ship has sailed, it's hard to force people to do that stuff. And when you're talking, you know, over three hundred or, you know, new homes, like the ship is sailing and I'm seeing a lot of, uh. Uh, there yards in, in our future.
So we do, we do, we, we've had some conversations internally and we're. So we do, we do, we, we've had some conversations internally, and we're looking into what we can do of a tree program. I don't have a lot of the details hashed out yet, um, encourage some of our staff members to start thinking about what can be done in order to use some of our forestry funds to help get trees and boulevards. So we're generating ideas how we can implement some sort of program.
Yeah.
I don't know if it would make, if it'll be able to happen this year, or if it'd be next year, but we are working towards trying to get a program together.
Well, on a twofold, you know, um, we've talked, I've, I've heard a few different people's opinions on how they get, make this happen. Um, I think there's a lot of good ideas out there, um, but, you know, a program that does help you know, existing communities or existing neighborhoods, and then also the program that works with the new construction too.
She keeps asking for this.
And I, I am, I am fine waiting, I just, um, I know that things take time, and I know that you guys are very busy, so I, I totally get it, I just, um, I just, I'm gonna keep pushing it, so we'll get there.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Jeff?
I don't have a whole lot, um, last week I, uh, had a MetroCard meeting, um, for the policy board to discuss some of the changes that they wanted to make, um, included one request, uh, Russ, Russ is not here tonight, um, to include a study now, um, which would be south to second, and then, uh, western, western Lyndon's for sixty-fourth Avenue corridor, um, I believe that, uh, is going to go forward, they're just going to include it with the, um, one of the other projects starting in player, in play. Um, other than that, Wednesday morning I went to an event for Grand Farm, um, and just observed that. Uh, nothing, a lot to report there, and, um, earlier today I talked to Brian about, uh, a reminder to try to find some sort of program for residents that are going to get their, um, water updated, uh, as to whether they want to replace the lines from the curb stop, uh, into their house, uh, try to find some sort of funding mechanism, uh, for these people to be able to afford or, um, pay their time, uh, whatever process would be needed to replace those lines, so that, uh, once we replace all the water mains for the city, that we get, uh, the rest of it fixed for each residence.
Like, how hard is it to, like, actually do that, like, not, because, I mean, how do you get the line? This might sound really like a dumb, dumb question, but like, how do you get the line, like, to into your house without?
Dig it up.
Yeah, from the curb stop. You dig it up there, then you dig it up by the house and you put the line in.
Build a pole to, I don't want to say a flexible.
It's poly, it is.
It's a poly plate.
So it's not like a huge, huge, like, deal?
It's not, but it's time consuming.
Yeah.
It's, it just, it just can be time consuming, so.
I'm trying to think, what if folks paid for that, it was like three grand, five grand, something like that, it wasn't terrible.
How far you have to run it and?
It was from the curb stop to the house.
What if you have to hook up, or what if you have, like, concrete in the way and stuff, I mean, then are you out of luck or?
Then you'd cost more.
The board.
Oh.
And that's, I'm just making sure that residents plan ahead and they're looking for some sort of funding if they need it to be able to do that, because you can replace the water main, but at some point, there's probably existing lines between where they're gonna replace and the actual house.
So we, I have had conversations with a, a bank that city works with, that, uh, is working towards having a, um, kind of like a home equity line, or credit program, or loan program. Uh, that they would try to push or gear down in Horace more. I've had conversations with that, conversations with them on that, and there's some different elements that the city might be able to work with them on. Uh, City of West Fargo, Morehead, I believe Fargo, they all have different programs like this, where they've worked with banks. What, how the banks have worked with them or encouraged them to do this was because they get credits. Trying to remember what they're called, but they get credits that help them. Now, we are, we don't have any zones or areas in Horace that are eligible for these credits. So, how we get a bank to work with us is through our partnerships, how we've worked with them already. And they're trying to get more of a presence into our community, because more customer base. So, we have talked to some banks about, there are one bank in particular about it, to see what they could do, and we have not locked down the details of it yet.
What's the, what's the average cost of, of doing that for you, for a resident?
The service line?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Like Sarah said, three to five or so thousand.
Could be.
Thousand?
Could be more, oh yeah.
A thousand dollars.
It all depends on the complexity and
How far the run is.
How far it runs and whatnot, but I mean, that's a pretty good average, and, I mean, like, my folks' building was built in the fifties, so they were due for an upgrade, and, uh, knew what it was gonna cost, and when they come through and did sewer, the city sewer upgrade, they opted to do that and spend a little money winding their driveway, so it made sense. What, um, age of the line would you say would need to be replaced?
Not necessarily based on age, it's based on condition.
So if, if we change our, when we change our casserole, and you still have discolored water, the very first question I'm probably going to ask her is, is, did you change, did you do anything to your service line, update it? Or any of your fixtures in your house, or anything like that? If they said no, that would be where I'd encourage them to look, uh, because if you have that water from casserole, it still has to go through all the piping in your house, and that whole ninety feet from where we stopped to their house, you know, is, you're just trying to cut down on the distance the water has to travel before.
It could be sent from years of use.
Yeah, so.
Do you see, like, tree roots and stuff penetrating those?
Not in water.
You'll, you know.
Pressure system, you'd find those.
Yeah.
We have sewer, we have tree roots in sewers, yeah.
Cool, thanks, Jeff.
Right? Anything else, Jeff?
Otherwise, I'm gonna look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Chelsea, Jeff, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're done.